At 6:03 PM, I'll be asking, is that Diana back there? Diana, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? And Councilwoman Valentine, in the prayer, please.
Pledge of Allegiance with the flag, the United States of America, for which stands one nation, God, indivisible, the liberty of the essence.
May we bow our heads. Almighty God, we thank you for all that you have done for us and all that you will do for us in the future. We thank you for our families. We thank you for our ability to bring good prayers and good modeling for you, for the city. We thank you for all. We pray for our troops. And we pray for our president and we pray for our citizens, the citizens of this city. Amen.
Thank you, Diana. Thank you, Councilwoman Valentine. So we have, let's see. Is Dr. Stephen Nellman here?
He is not here, but can we proceed with that?
He needs to be here to accept this. We need to, let's, go ahead.
It is my understanding that he has board meetings, there's a conflict, but he's very much interested in the position. So I'd like to see us proceed with it.
Okay, so.
And he can be sworn in at a later date.
Absolutely. We have a presentation. Let's, am I out of order, Mr. City Attorney, if I go to that? Or should we do that right after oral communications?
I think we should do a roll call first.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Valentine?
Here.
Councilmember Montero?
Present.
Councilmember Reyes English. Mayor Pro Tem David Patterson?
I'm here.
And Mayor Vargas?
Here.
All are present except for Councilmember Reyes English.
Which, she has been excused.
Yes.
She's called in. It's okay, so can we go ahead and do that, Mr. City Attorney? Or do we need to do that after?
What did we, what did you want to do first?
Approving the nomination of Dr. Stephen Nellman.
Yeah, we could take it out of order if that's what you prefer.
Are we okay with that?
That's fine.
Okay, there, we don't need to have that after oral communications?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Well, how about this? Since he's not here, we'll do it right after oral communications because we give the opportunity for residents to comment on anything that we have on the agenda that we have to decide on. Okay? Just to be complete. Item one is a presentation on tonight's agenda. Councilmember Valentine, please proceed on elder abuse advocacy.
Thank you, Mayor. Would Ms. Patrice Genso Springer come forward? I am very pleased to present Patrice Genso Springer, who is going to discuss elder abuse. Ms. Springer is an expert on the subject and is in charge of the Elder Abuse Division of the New Star Family Justice Center right here in Hawthorne. Ms. Springer also has her own nonprofit corporation, Your Image 2020, a consulting firm which prepares job seekers for the job market. Ms. Springer?
Thank you, thank you. Mayor Vargas and esteemed councilmembers. It's been a while since I've seen you guys, but some new faces here. Let me make sure I can open this up. Okay, so tonight I'm going to talk about strengthening communities and how we can support measures to prevent elder abuse. Louder? Oh, sorry. Is that better? My name is Patrice Genso Springer, and I'm an advocacy organizer for elder abuse. I'm proud to be part of the New Star Family Justice Center that mainly deals with domestic violence in the South Bay. And Elinor Maloney, the director there, has been working tirelessly. And I'm so proud to be part of the group that is helping her with achieving some of her goals. So what is elder abuse? I don't know if you really have thought about what really elder abuse is. It's the mistreatment or harming of an older person and an injustice that we all need to prevent and address. Elder abuse occurs in both community and institutional settings and takes many forms, including physical abuse, emotional, psychological abuse, sexual abuse, neglect, and financial exploitation. Elder abuse is believed to be widely underdetected and underreported. So what causes elder abuse? Elder abuse can occur when strong social supports are not in place to keep us connected as we age. While anyone is potentially at risk of abuse, some factors can increase one's risk of experiencing abuse. Social isolation, lack of access to support services and community resources, physical, mental, or emotional needs in carrying out daily activities. Elder abuse can be prevented if we work together to create a stronger society that values and supports all of us as we age. So what are you seeing? How often are you hearing people allege elder abuse? What scenarios are you hearing about most frequently? Or are you hearing about anything? Am I going the wrong way? I'm going the wrong way. Okay. And so it can occur really all at once. Physical, psychological, financial, sexual neglect. It's not only one thing that can happen to our elders. It could be one or many of these things at once. Signs of elder abuse. Look at this. So it's up to all of us to look at the signs. Broken bones or bruises, those are obvious. Untreated bed sores. Torn, stained, or bloody underclothing. Sexually transmitted diseases without clear explanations. Dirtiness, poor nutrition or dehydration, poor living conditions. Lack of medical aids like glasses, walkers, teeth, hearing aids, and medications. Over and undermedicated. Emotional and behavioral signs can be unusual changes in behavior of sleep. Fear of anxiety, isolation from friends or family, withdrawal from normal activities, sadness. Financial signs can be unusual changes in a bank account or money management. Unusual or sudden changes in a will or other financial document. Fraudulent signatures on financial documents, unpaid bills. So reporting abuse. You don't have to be afraid to report elder abuse. There's Adult Protective Services. And I'm hoping that I can get the council to maybe put this on the website, on this Hawthorne City Council website, so that people can have the phone number. So Adult Protective Services is 1-877-477-3646. Local law enforcement, Hawthorne Police Department. And I hope I have this number right, 310-349-2700. And Long Term Care Ombudsman, which is 1-800-334-9473. I've left some brochures out in front, so please feel free to take one with you when you leave tonight. Elder abuse is preventable, and everyone has a role to play. All of us play in preventing elder abuse. It's all up to us to build strong supports for one another and prevent abuse before it happens. Do something now. So everyone, in your own way, take the pledge. I will do everything I can to prevent and report elder abuse and exploitation. I will never knowingly violate the trust of the elders with whom I come in contact. I will ensure that I know how to recognize elder abuse and exploitation and how to report it. I will strive to educate my family, friends, and associates to know when, where, and how to report suspected elder abuse and exploitation. Thank you very much. Any questions?
To the chair?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Springer, for bringing this attention. It's a very serious matter because we have seen so many elder abuse on the news almost, you know, almost every day. So do you have any statistics if the elder abuse is going up or is diminished? Have you seen a trend?
It's actually, it's, the problem with elder abuse is it's an underreported issue. And it's very difficult to really get strong statistics because people that are older are being taken care of by family members. And so sometimes other people don't want to report a family member who's caring for an elder person. So it's a very difficult situation. And I think we just all have to take responsibility that if we see something, you, all you have to do is call and report it. You don't have to do anything about it. You can remain anonymous. And someone, let the system check and see if there is abuse taking place.
Thank you.
I have a question. Thank you. What have you found? I know that you work at the New Star Family Justice Center. What have, what have you found with the people who come in to see you? What are, what, what kind types of abuses have they been reporting?
Well, we don't really serve people that have been abused at the New Star Family Justice Center. What my job is, is to bring awareness to people and have people report it to agencies that are equipped to handle the elder abuse situation, whether it be financial, physical, mental, that sort of thing. So at the center itself, we do not deal with the situation of elder abuse. What we're doing is providing information to people so they know where to go to, to report it, and feel comfortable that they're not going to get in trouble for reporting it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We, real quick comment. Ms. Springer?
Yes.
Yes, so one of the things that I noticed is that there's a lot of targeted, like, telephone calls, scams that take place.
Right, right. And actually, right now, there are a lot of COVID scams going on with elders. So it's important to keep your eyes and ears open. There may be people that don't know who to go to or are ashamed of being taken advantage of. So if you can be that helping ear to someone who is helpless, who has been taken advantage of, that is elder abuse. So make sure that you give them the numbers or you report it for the person and get help for them.
Yeah, because that's a criminal act, taking, doing, doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you once again. Item two is also a presentation. Councilmember Montero, please proceed. Recognition of Juneteenth, June 19, 2022. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I'm going to ask Ms. Ruby Cohen, Ryan Richard, Linda Brown, and Mo Awadala, because they helped us and me to put the Juneteenth together at the Holly Park. And this was the first year that we actually did it at the Holly Park Park. Because as you know, you know, Holly Park Neighborhood Association has been doing breakfast pancake for many, many years, celebrating the Juneteenth. And they were the only one doing that in the city of Hawthorne, right? So since this year, the, after President Biden signed a decree to make Juneteenth a holiday, a federal holiday, and also the city of Hawthorne voted to give one more holiday to the staff. So for, for this day on, we're going to celebrate Juneteenth every year at the Holly Park. So these four individuals helped us put that Juneteenth together. So I want you guys to come to the podium, because I have some certificate for you. Again, Ruby, come on, don't be shy. Ryan, Linda Brown, and Ms. Awadala, because he was there cooking the hot dogs from 10:00 AM until 3:00 PM. So as you know, the Congresswoman Maxine Waters was supposed to be there that day, but she did not because she, you know, had some COVID issues. So she sent us a certificate that said it was for the city of Hawthorne on the occasion of your inaugural Juneteenth celebration presenting collaboration with the Holly Park Neighborhood Association and Parkside Village as part of your year-long 100-year anniversary. And in my appreciation of the city leadership employees and volunteers joined together to host an event where the community can commemorate this significant occasion. I stand my best wish for most success family event. As you know, in our Juneteenth, taxes was celebrated, Juneteenth every year, right? Because back in 1865, the soldiers, the Union soldiers, get the Galveston taxes after two years to liberate the enslaved individual of African Americans. So it is with my great pride and honor that I'm going to give this certificate to you guys. And I want to say thank you to Ryan, President of the Holly Park Neighborhood Association, Ms. Ruby from Parkside Village, Ms. Linda Brown, that is also is this, I believe you're the secretary for the, no?
The treasurer.
The treasurer for the Holly Park Neighborhood Association. And Mr. Mo Awadala, because he was there all day cooking those hot dogs. So again, I'm going to give you guys this certificate. I don't know if you guys want to take some pictures. And I don't know if you guys want to say something, Ms. Valentine, because that's your neighborhood, so go ahead.
Thank you. So yes, congratulations to Holly Park. And thank you for combining the neighborhoods and, and bringing the communities together for this. Holly Park had a longstanding tradition of celebrating Juneteenth from probably about 2010 or so, 2011. We always had a, Holly had a pancake breakfast to celebrate Juneteenth. So this was the first year it became an official federal holiday. And I'm so happy to see that we combined different communities together. So Parkside Village and Mr. Awadala, what is your community? What is your, what is your community?
I'm part of the Hawthorne Kiwanis in the chamber.
Kiwanis Club, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Councilman Alex Montero asked me to barbecue, because I've been doing that for the past 12 years for my community. And I said yes.
Okay.
I went and done it.
So I'm happy to see that we were able to combine different communities together because Juneteenth is a holiday that is celebrated by all now. And I want, I'd like to see this in the future. More communities come together to celebrate Juneteenth Day. Congratulations and thank you for everything you did. It was a great event, by the way.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I just want to thank you guys for coming up with a good reason to celebrate my birthday. My birth, you guys celebrated June, I appreciate it. Juneteenth on my birthday, which was June 18th. But more than anything, I appreciate having the opportunity to come out and just fellowship with my, my neighbors. You know, I've missed, honestly, I've missed all of you guys. And having that opportunity to really kind of hang out and break bread. And quite sometimes it was great to see so many different people from around the city, regardless of what part of Hawthorne you guys reside in, come out to, to celebrate Juneteenth. So thank you guys for putting that together.
Okay, so congratulations, guys. Juneteenth is a very important day. As, as Councilwoman Valentine said, the Holly Park Homeowners Association has done a great, great good by yearly celebrating the liberation, final liberation. I guess they were liberated, but they didn't realize that they were liberated in Galveston, Texas. And you've had that pancake breakfast. So it's good to hear that it was held at a park. And Councilman Montero had a great support from you guys. So thank you for doing that for the community and bringing awareness with what happened historically. Thank you.
So Ryan, if you want to say some word, and Ruby, go ahead.
Don't be shy. Well, again, thank you. We appreciate you all for this recognition of this event. He said the Holly Park Neighborhood Association has been doing a pancake breakfast to celebrate Juneteenth for the past 10, 15 years. Really do appreciate the opportunity this year to invite more of the community in. Now, seeing that Juneteenth is a federal holiday, we do intend on continuing to make sure that we're bringing awareness to this event, bringing awareness to, to that, those that came before us, and then also inviting our community to come in and also support us in making sure that that history is not lost there. So again, we appreciate everyone and look forward to this event growing and getting bigger over the next few years.
I did owe whatever he said there. I also, we did collect some, some funds, you know, for Parkside Village when we were doing the event. And I would like to present those funds to the Holly Park Association. So I'll be handing that to the president, which is Ryan. And I'm pretty sure he'll find a place, you know, to fund whatever they want to fund with the monies there. So, thank you. Okay. So again, next year, hopefully, it's going to get bigger and better and more education will be out there. So people really understand what Juneteenth really means and why they're really, really celebrating it. So yeah, we want to just, like I said, pass the information out about Juneteenth, what it represents, and why we celebrate it. Although we've been celebrating it for years, finally, it's recognized as a federal holiday, which is a big step forward. We're still getting there to making it a reality. So.
Thank you, Ruby.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown, do you want to say anything? Because since you're the treasurer and we went shopping together. And thank, and again, thank you, Ruby, because I know Holly Park always fundraised money for their annual scholarship that they give to a senior from the high school. So picture time. Come on, let's go. On this way, please.
Perfect. Here we go. One, two. Thank you, everybody.
And just I have to, Mr. Mayor, I just have to say also, thank you for the community service, Parks and Recs, for helping us that day, because I know there were three days, no, four days off. But we got John and Gerard over there who helped us set up. So thank you, Community Services Department, Parks and Recs. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. All right. Real quick, think. All right, guys, real quick. Okay. So we have the meeting today. Since I'm conducting the meeting, and we're all participating, I want to make sure that we just establish this, let's all follow the rules of decorum. We do have several discussion action items. So we need to limit that. I think there might be actual limit that in one of our policies and how we list these. We'll go through them this time. So we just need to be mindful in our city attorney and our city manager, when these are put on there, that we limit these. We, we're, everybody's abiding by the presentation limit. So that's good. And just keeping those things in mind. Please make sure that you list all your, during your elected official reports comments, because we want to avoid go-backs, okay? Because we don't, if somebody's talking, then hey, you have your, you have your time to say your piece with regards to anything you want to say, okay? Okay? And for the residents who come up oral communication, remember, it's your First Amendment right to speak to the council and say what you want. Okay? You can do whatever you want, but just remember that your argument starts failing once you become offensive and once you start attacking people and make, and you start taking it into a different direction. That's a risk you take as somebody who's presenting and talking before the city council. Okay? So if you want. All right, can we close the door, Mr. Migo? Can you do us a favor and close the door, sir? All right. Yeah, please take a seat, sir. You could be the first one today, sir. All right, Mr. Quick, please read the guidelines for communication, sir.
Yes, pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, our remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Okay, Gordon Michael Migo, State Water Resources. Sir.
Hello, everyone. Gordon Michael Migo, native and resident of Hawthorne since October 8, 1952. I see everybody's all looking good here. Over the years, the state of California has experienced periods of shortages in our water supply. While there have been conservation measures required by government for residential areas, commercial businesses, and so on, there has been limited efforts to increase the supply of water. The Los Angeles River is a potential resource for fresh water. We can build a modified dam that can have like swing open gates, you know, kind of like a Panama Canal thing during a large day huges. But basically, it would prevent, you know, a lot of the, you know, during rainstorms and a lot, water from being just simply dumped into the ocean. And that way, we can store the water. It can be also used as a navigable thing, you know, kind of like, you know, Florida or Chicago or something like that. And since California is located along the Pacific Ocean, we can build desalinization plants in various coastal areas. The salty brine will be discharged far offshore to mitigate any environmental concerns. And I know, I think like San Diego has it. Unfortunately, the Coastal Commission had voted against the one in Huntington Beach. I think El Segundo is considering a plan there. And I think there's something else up north as well. But I think when people say, yes, you know, the cost of water made from desalinization plants is quite a bit more. But considering no water, the cost of is, is far worse. The construction of high-density residential complexes significantly impacts the amount of available water for people in general. Governor Gavin Newsom has ignored the objections of elected officials in the cities of Hawthorne and elsewhere in our state when he signed SB 9 and SB 10 that abolished R1 zoning for single-family housing. So it's like, yeah, we, we, we need to house the people. But yeah, it just seems like the more you build, you never can really get to the point where you're going to house everybody. Then you're just inviting more and more people. And thus, if we're having limited water supply and then you don't want to build a desalinization plant or, or something along that line, you know, other purposes, bringing in fresh water, storing it and so forth, then it just seems like it's, we're at contrary contradictions, you know, whatever, you know. So anyway, that be said, I hope that the various cities in the South Bay and in LA County can get together and kind of urge the state, you know, they, they got about $100 billion surplus. I mean, another thing too is that, you know, people over the years, voters have put forward, you know, funding approvals for various means of doing so. So hopefully we can get there.
Thank you, sir. Pat Donaldson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Patricia Donaldson, President and CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. Three announcements. One is we're going to have Casino Night on August 13th at the Moose Lodge. And it's the Moose Lodge and the Hawthorne Chamber putting it on. It'll be from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM. The Taco Lady will be there. There'll be desserts, there'll be games, door prizes. So we hope that you can all make it there. And then we have our golf tournament coming up on September 26th. 11:00 AM is registration. It's going to be at the Rio Hondo in Downey. 12:00 noon is Shotgun. There'll be a continental breakfast, there'll be a lunch, and then dinner will be served. And my last thing is to the city council, we have individuals that are planning to run for city council in November that proclaim themselves candidates. They are passing flyers and placing signs on yards already. These individuals are breaking the campaign laws. The FPPC only allows you to fundraise money. It does not make you a candidate. The LA County Register Voting Registration Office only certifies you as a candidate in the third week in August after the Hawthorne City Clerk Office submits your documents. And the LAC must verify all required signatures on the petitions for candidates. Only then you become a candidate if you qualify. So if the individuals are breaking a simple campaign law, just imagine what other city laws they may be breaking if they get elected to benefit themselves. Thank you.
Jim Matthews. Was she talking about you, Mr. Matthews? Okay, no, no.
Guilty as charged, Mr. Ray.
Just checking in.
No, thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. You probably remember, but I addressed you on June 14th regarding solar power. And I'm here tonight to thank you for the quick action and response to my request. You've proven that one voice can be heard and can make a difference. I'm living proof of it. If anybody has a question or a problem, come here and address the council. Seeing Item 8, Resolution Number 8369 on tonight's City Clerk's Consent Calendar, the resolution I ask you to consider signing is a powerful statement by the council. I hope the strongly worded resolution you've drafted is indeed signed tonight and the California Public Utilities Commission rejects all current proposals by the utility companies to implement a rooftop solar generation tax, et cetera. If the city resolution is signed tonight, the next step would be for the city to send letters stating its positions in writing, along with a copy of the signed resolution to the California Public Utilities Commission Governor Newsom's office stating its position. I have a sheet for you tonight with the contact information for the Solar Rights Alliance. They'd be glad to help you with that process if you need it. They're a nonprofit. I'm a grassroots person involved with that. As for homeowners or businesses here in Hawthorne that generate rooftop solar power like me, please make your voices heard. Call Governor Newsom at 916-445-2841 and leave him a message. Ask him to oppose the current utility company attempts to change the rules and impose a rooftop solar generation tax. The number again is 916-445-2841. If you want further information on this, a good resource is the Solar Rights Alliance. It's www.solorights.org. Mr. Mayor and Council, in closing, thank you again for listening to me. Thank you for taking the actions that you've done. You've stepped up to the plate. I truly appreciate it as a resident and a homeowner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Laurelia Walker. Anybody else that's going to speak? Just form a line behind her, please.
Honorable Mayor Vargas and members of the Hawthorne City Council, I am here to address the continued closure of the Hawthorne Public Library. It shut down with the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, but has never reopened. The Lennox Library has reopened. The Wiseburn Library has reopened. I understand that the Hawthorne Library is part of the LA County system. But the impact of the closure adversely affects Hawthorne residents and therefore should be of concern to this council. Residents now have no local access to free resources, including books, music, multimedia materials, computers, and the internet, while the library remains unavailable. As we are in full summer vacation time, it is unacceptable that our youngest and most vulnerable residents have no local access to summer reading programs. I call on the council as a whole and each individual council member to detail what efforts, if any, are being made to alleviate this situation. I was also going to address the pool, but I have been informed that that is going to open next week. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, ma'am. We're good. And I was going to say, I was going to make a call to Mr. Daniel Granados from the Hawthorne Library System, from the library system. And I think he's here. He answered my call really like that quick. I made the call, guys. I made the call. Okay?
Absolutely. Daniel Granados, Community Library Manager for Hawthorne Library, part of LA County Library. So I'm very pleased to announce that the Hawthorne Library will be reopening on July 5th at 12:00 PM.
See magic.
So you may or may not be aware, when the pandemic shutdowns first occurred, we did continue to provide sidewalk service and pickup service up until about a year ago, when the library closed for extensive maintenance and remodeling. So there were, of course, as you're all aware, there were many supply chain issues and pandemic-related issues that kind of extended the work a little longer than, than we thought it was going to be originally. So there was a lot of work between different county departments in Southern California Edison and a lot that went into that, that project. But I'm happy, you know, next week we'll be able to reopen. We've been, been in there the last few weeks unpacking thousands of boxes. We packed up the entire library. So thousands of boxes we've been opening. And I hope I don't have to do that again anytime soon. But so that's, we've been there working. And then, you know, also during the pandemic, as you may be aware, all county employees become disaster service workers during a state of emergency. And many of our staff were called to work on projects like contact tracing. Even up until this week, we have the last ones coming back from that. We had staff who were assigned to project room key, working graveyard shifts at hotels that were housing the homeless. We had staff assisting with the food distribution. So we were very involved with all of the county's pandemic efforts doing that. And I'm happy to say all our staff are coming back as of this week. So we'll be ready to open, you know, next week. So our hours will be Tuesday and Wednesday, 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Repeat that again?
Sure. Tuesday and Wednesday from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Wiseburn Library will be switching their hours a little bit since we're reopening. They'll be going to Monday through Friday schedule. So Wiseburn Library will be open on, on Mondays. So there will be some service available on Mondays. So we'll be open Tuesday through Saturday here at Hawthorne Library across the street in Wiseburn will be Monday through Friday. And yeah, I'm happy we'll be open. You know, if you don't stop by before then, you know, during the centennial celebration on the 9th, you know, come see us. We'll be, we'll be over at the library, so we'll be open. And yeah, I don't know if you have any questions about, about the reopening. Please, please let me know.
This is great news. Let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you.
Yeah, super quick, brief.
Yeah, very quick. Ms. Granado, thank you very much because we've been looking forward for that renovation of the, of this library for a long, long time.
Oh, yeah. And it's, you'll be amazed. If you ever saw, you know, it was a very well-used building. You know, very much the original state from the 60s when it was built. And it's really pretty amazing inside, the difference. I mean, it's, to me, it's totally different inside. You'll be pretty amazed, I think.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It was, it is very good because even when Ivan Burke was in the office as the county supervisor, I tried to lobby to bring more money to renovate this library. So I'm glad to see that it happened. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
I come in peace, really. Okay. First complaint, no, seriously. No, I want to really thank the police department for doing movies at the park. Our community at Parkside Village really enjoyed it. It brought the community together. So I just want to really thank the police department. They did an excellent job and hopefully they'll bring a lot more of that to the surrounding communities or Hawthorne. The next thing is I noticed that there is a lot of illegal trash dumping at the park. It seems like it's getting out of control where now they're dumping stoves, refrigerators, and so forth. Maybe we can recommend for now the police department to really step in and do something, maybe do video surveillance, literally. And also maybe raise the fines or penalties to anybody who does illegal dumping. That's really for the safety of the community. Also, speaking of libraries, we still have an abandoned, what looks like an abandoned library, which sits on 120th, Cross Street's 120th and Van Ness Street. It is a safety and security risk to all the surrounding communities there, which is Holly Park, Parkside Village, and Tradition of the Greens. We do ask for someone to do something about it. We've been dealing with this over six years. It does belong to the LA County and it just sits there. Yes, we understand that they are using it for COVID emergency supplies. But it can, instead of us taking shots, like COVID shots, or maybe voting under a highway, we can maybe consider using a building to use, you know, use those, you know, we have a lot of stuff that we need to take care of. And there is this, a useless building sitting there. And if you really want to help out the community to vote, healthcare, informational, for like resources, for the elderly, for the youth, the internet, and I keep on going. But we need to try to do something because we have a building that could prosper and help the community at the very end. But overall, just wanted to say thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Through the chair, let me just say a quick comment.
Needs to be quick.
Ms. Cohen, actually, that building, we have been trying for almost 25 years to get that building. We have gone to three supervisors that have retired. And now we got a new one, Holly Mitchell. But it's been 25 years that, that even Ms. Valentine, myself, we've been trying to get that building open. So they've been giving us a lot of challenges. It's not like we have not tried. I'm telling you, for 25 years, I've been trying.
I've been trying too.
So.
So I concur with you.
So it is, it is a challenge and we will have to figure it out how we could, you know, deal with the challenge. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Through the chair, may I just comment?
Yeah, how's the brief brief, guys?
Very brief.
Or else we'll eliminate it completely.
Right, it's not, okay. So we have been trying. And what it takes is more communities, more community members like you to push for it. So that's what needs to happen. Because we've been to the, we've been to the, we've been to the county. We've, we've had communications with them. And they've stayed, they've stayed fast, they haven't budged. But that's because there's no community push. I say, I say the community needs to push for this. And it has to be more than just you.
Oh, I can have a whole bunch of people march up here.
Well, there you go.
Or do you want them at the LA County? You just have to let me know where.
Not here, LA County. Board of Supervisors meeting. You can take a petition.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers and city staff and neighbors. I am speaking tonight as Chair of Hawthorne Veterans Affairs Commission. And I would like to add my support to Item 16, the appointment of Dr. Stephen Nellman to the Veterans Affairs Commission. I have spoken to Dr. Nellman. He has a skill set that is very much what we need. And I know that he will be a very, very welcome asset on the commission. And for other people in the community, we do have a couple of other openings. So if we have other veterans who live in the city of Hawthorne, I believe if you go to the city clerk's office and fill out an application, that's where the process starts. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is in support of Hawthorne's 100th birthday party coming up and the parade and veterans issues and everything combined with that, we will have in the parade a Huey helicopter that served in Vietnam that has been completely and totally restored and put on a trailer that was built by Vietnam veterans. You'll be able to see the helicopter. I believe you'll be able to get into the helicopter and there'll be all kinds of learning materials inside it. learning materials inside it as well. So it's not every day that we have a Huey helicopter rolling down Hawthorne Boulevard, but on the 9th, we will, so come and see it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing no fewer, uh, any, uh, other speakers, I'll declare oral communications closed. Ordered. Okay. Councilmember colleagues, now that we have a chance for oral communications, I'm going to ask that we pull up item number 16. Is there any opposition to that? Everybody in concurrence?
Yes.
Okay. The nomination of Dr. Stephen Nellman to the Veterans Affairs Commission. Due to a scheduling conflict, Dr. Nellman is unable to attend tonight's meeting. If he is appointed tonight, the city clerk's office will reach out to him so he can be sworn in at a later time. I make a motion to appoint Dr. Stephen Nellman to the Veterans Affairs Commission.
Second.
Okay. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Uh, we want to congratulate Dr. Stephen Nellman on his appointment to the Veterans Affairs Commission. Uh, he's well-qualified, a former veteran himself. Uh, we really appreciate him stepping up and taking this charge. Returning to the front of the agenda and the items, we have the city clerk's consent calendar. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I have six items on the consent calendar. There are items three, four, five, six, seven, and eight for your consideration and approval. Item three, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and/or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item four, city treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item five, approval of the city council minutes for the regular meetings of April 27th, 2021, the special meeting of May 21st, 2021, and the special meeting of May 25th, 2021. Item number six, resolution number 8367, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, accepting the grant of funds from the governor's office of emergency services for the purchase of high-frequency communications equipment that will allow the city of Hawthorne to be included in an integrated high-frequency radio network service that will provide alerts to local agencies and the ability to communicate with state, local, and federal agencies in the event of an emergency. Item seven, resolution number 8368, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving budget allocations for specified elected officials for the 2022 through 2023 fiscal year. Item eight, resolution number 8369, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, supporting the growth and use of solar and clean energy for adoption.
I move.
I'd like to pull number seven.
My motion wasn't seconded?
Second, I'll second.
Well, we'll, uh, we'll take, say, wasn't seconded, you're, you wanted to pull which?
Seven.
Seven. Okay, then I'll make, uh, that's fine. I'll make a motion for all items except seven.
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council, city council voting yes.
Go ahead, councilwoman.
Yes, the reason I'm pulling it is because, um, exhibit A, um, some of the items on here are outdated, and I'd like to request that exhibit A be changed every year because, for example, here are the, the items that I believe are outdated. Sociedad Jose Martin Cuban Festival, they're not having it this year. Um, Board of Equalization Affordable Housing Symposium, number 23, um, that was something that was several years ago. As far as I know, they're not having it this year. My Brothers Keeper, number 34, is no longer in existence. No, we, we don't actually have a committee that that supports that any longer, and there may be others also on here that, um, I, I, I cannot say for sure whether all of these things, all of these items on here are going to be held this year. The, many of them are held every year, but I have not, uh, resolved to rise, for example. I don't know if it's going to be held this year. There hasn't been any request as far as I know to to hold it this year. So I think some of these are outdated. That's my bottom line.
Councilwoman, uh, I kind of sort of agree with you. There's, uh, to the best of our knowledge, we can make it maybe go down the list. If you have anything you're concerned, we can just, uh, determine if we include or exclude.
But to the chair?
Go ahead.
Actually, thi- this list is not supposed to be for this year. This list is the ones that we have approved in the past that our stipend can go. It's just telling us these agencies on this list is the, the ones that we can give money out of the, our stipend. Now, you're correct, some of these items here have not, do not exist anymore, like My Brothers Keeper, so that's true. Uh, but this list is not just for this year, it's a continuing list for the following years to come.
It is, but if it's not, but it needs to be updated every year.
It just needs to be updated, but let's say, uh, like.
Needs to be updated every year, otherwise it doesn't make any sense.
We know they're gonna do the festival again, so it's not like, they not, they might postpone it for this year, but they, eventually they will come back next year.
But if we, if they're not going to have it this year, then we can't give it, give our stipend for it this year.
But you can give it in two years.
Um, I'd like to, I understand.
Okay, I think it should be updated every year.
I understand what both positions are.
Mr. Kim?
Just a moment, sir.
Can you address this, please?
Yes. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, I need to say, I understand what the concerns of our councilwoman and with the concerns of Councilwoman Montero, but there's items here that we know with certitude are no longer going to be held. We need to strike those.
And my office staff who went through this list, they may have missed it because they're not aware that some of these, you have to have some historical knowledge to know which events are still, uh, in existence. If we're permanently, there, it's no longer in existence, we could just delete it and still approve the resolution as amended. It's just a minor amendment that we can make.
Okay, so I think if anybody has a concern? Go through the chair.
Also, I would suggest that, I don't know, we have some kind of mechanism where we solicit, um, events that are planned for the upcoming year that we can, you know, we can add to this. Um, I know I've, um, seen some organizations plan events and kind of last minute try to rush and get that event approved to, to be, um, donated to. So I, I'm not sure what the right mechanism to do that is, but it might be nice just to kind of, you know, at one point throughout the, maybe the end of the year, beginning of the year, just start a process, kind of just soliciting, um, you know, input as to what events may be happening throughout the year that we can add, um, and just make sure that it's, um, not a cumbersome process if we do need to add something, uh, throughout the year.
So let's, let's just go through this list. I have four, four items that I believe are no longer going to be active. I believe that resolve to rise, Board of Equalization, LA Chargers Community Events, and My Brothers Keeper.
Okay, can you go over one more time with the numbers? Can you specify the numbers?
Yes, I'll say the numbers. In my, my opinion, based on my historical knowledge, I believe that the resolve to rise, uh, okay, sorry, 17, number 23, number 25, and number 34 are no longer going to be active. And, uh, councilmember Montero, you're number one, is that going to be something that you could possibly have, sir?
It could be possible.
Okay, so we leave it there. We'll leave it there.
That's what I'm saying. That I'm saying, because this list was, it was put together from the beginning so it can give us like a guidance, uh, to who we can donate our stipend, and but it is, it is a growing list. Every year we could add or subtract.
The problem is that if I see my, if, if I see something on here and I want to give and they're not having it this year, then I, then my stipend can't be used for that. If I, if I, if I allocate my stipend for something that's not going to happen.
But Ms. Valentine, you can call them and ask them, okay, you guys are having, like, for example, you contacted Cuban Jose Martin, they said they're not doing the Cuban Festival this year? They have told you that? Because they did it last year.
They're not having it this year. I know that.
So, so, so that's, that's something that then you would not write your check. Uh, so, but this list actually has been here even before my time.
Yes.
Uh, so it's something that has been in, in the books, and then every year we add or subtract names from the list.
Yeah, that's fine.
And that, that, that's what we have done in the past. But we cannot just say Jose Martin's not gonna be no longer this year, but they can come back in 2022, 23, in January, say, we're doing, uh, Cuban Festival, and your stipend goes all the way up to doing 30th, 2022, 23. If you follow my, my trainer thought? Because so then if in January, if they said, we're gonna do a Cuban Festival in 2023, and then if they're not on this list, we cannot give them no money.
So, this is a running list, but we can still clear, add or subtract. And with, with historical knowledge that we have, I suggest that 17, 23, 25, and 34 be taken off the list because.
I concur.
There's no more active members, and they have not approached us in two, like, three or four years. So we know that with certitude. Is, do I have concurrence for my city council colleagues?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Based, and, and if anybody else has anything else to question, go ahead and just, uh, mention it now.
Yeah, I think, um, the Locks of Love, number nine, I don't have any in- information that that's still happening.
Yeah.
That should be struck.
Okay. Your concurrence, uh?
The Wiseburn Education Foundation, number 14, Rock Around the Block.
But they did it this year. I attended.
There, there's still a possibility that they could ask this.
Yeah, I attended the Rock Around the Block this year. They would, they did it.
I suggest we keep it because they, they, even though they didn't approach us this time, maybe, they could approach, but did we, did you give them the?
They approached me, so, so I bought some stuff on, on the auction.
You bought some stuff?
Yeah, but it was, you know, but, but they did it around the block.
But this is for city money. Did you use this, uh?
And I didn't use my stipend because I gave my stipend to somebody else, to the, to the World Fest.
Okay.
I give all, you know what I mean?
I think we should keep that one. Anybody else?
Senior Citizen Resource, oh, no, they're having that. I, I, I.
They had it, they've had it at St. Joseph's Church.
They had it, they've had it in the past. I don't know if they're having it this year. I think we should just leave it alone, leave that one alone.
About the Business Expo, should we take that one off? I don't know if anything's going on.
Yeah, I think we should leave that one.
That one was for you, Councilwoman Montero.
You bet.
That one's on your behalf, Matt.
You bet.
Erasals.
The H E F Family and Pet Extravaganza, 18?
That's, I think that might still be a possibility. Uh, Mr. Aguilar is still active with his, uh, his shows, and that could be a.
Yeah, it could be a possibility. They only stopped it because, what I think was because of COVID, but actually, you know, am I?
What about the, the Monita Gardens Improvement Healthcare and Health Fair and 5K Run?
Well.
Could we take that off for now, or you want to keep it on there?
We haven't done it, uh, because, again, because, you know, uh, since the start of the COVID, but now we combine everything with the, uh, Earth Day, right?
So then we could just.
And so we do provide this fair and all of that at the same time. But eventually, you know, if we go back for the, uh, health of the community, you know, uh, 5K and run is.
I don't think we have to, like, really, really scrutinize this list, this detail. Like, I don't think it hurts anybody if there's a superfluous event on here for any given year.
Yeah, because all this could be potential that if, if COVID dissipated and normal COVID-19, some of these events could start happening next year.
So I'm gonna just move this along and make a motion that we accept the list and the resolution with the exception of nine, 17, 23, 25, and 34.
I second that.
Okay. Uh, please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
And, and we just need to keep in mind that if these groups, uh, revive or come back again, that they can appeal to us with an ample amount of time so we can include them on this list. It can't be last minute, oh, these people are having this thing and they decided to ask the city for money. Well, that's bad planning on their part, so they need to kind of just anticipate it if they've done it before.
We probably need to set a date by which they need to submit their request.
What would be a good reasonable amount of time? We need to have at least two council meetings before their event. They're not even gonna get the money until after, so they're gonna have to front the money if they wait till the last moment, because it takes a while to process whatever stipend, or whatever allotment that we want to give. So it's to their benefit that they come to us.
I mean, I, I, I wouldn't care if somebody donated some stipend to an event that's happened after the event is passed, like, it's not that big of a deal.
I'm just saying.
I don't think we need to have a deadline. You know, if they just can't get a check until we've approved them, that's all. And if it happens before or after the event, it is what it is.
Just, um, it just seems that, like, we've had at least four or five times throughout the year that we end up having to add people to the list, so.
Uh, to the chair, yeah, you, you're right, because, uh, the, uh, Wiseburn, um, Rock Around the Block, they didn't notify me about two days before the event.
Okay.
Okay, so that is why I didn't give them the, from my stipend, so I just went online and bought stuff on the auction, right? But then I went over there and gave them a certificate.
Okay, that's good. Thank you, guys. All right, city council colleagues. Okay. Public hearings, next we have a public hearing. Mr. Clerk, item nine, please.
Yes, uh, item nine, now is the time and place for a public hearing to adopt resolution 8365 confirming assessments for fiscal year 2022 through 23, weed and waste abatement and authorizing the collection thereof. Public Works Department Declaration publication filed, no written communications were received.
Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? If not, I'll declare the hearing closed, ordered. Can you please read item 8365?
Um, yes. Resolution number 8365, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, confirming assessments for fiscal year 2022 through 2023, weed and waste abatement and authorizing the collection thereof for adoption.
Move to approve.
Second. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
We have a second public hearing, Mr. Clerk.
Item 10, now is the time and place for a public hearing to adopt resolution number 8364, approving the annual engineer's report, confirming the assessment diagram and assessment amount, and authorizing the levy and collection of assessments for improving of the street lighting system, Landscaping and Street Lighting Act of 1972, for the fiscal year 2022 through 23. Public Works Department Declaration filed, uh, sorry, publication filed, no written communications were received.
Any speakers for this item? If not, I'll declare the hearing closed, ordered. Can you please read item, uh, resolution 8364?
A resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving the annual engineer's report, confirming the assessment diagram and assessment amount, and authorizing the levy and collection of assessments for improvement of the street lighting system, Landscaping and Street Lighting Act of 1972, for the fiscal year 2022 through 2023 for adoption.
I move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Okay, city council colleagues, we have general matters. Mr. Clerk, please read the item.
Item 11, progress payment number four and fif- final acceptance in the amount of $262,969.50 due to Martinez Landscape Company, Inc. of Silmar, California, for the Holly and Ramona Park Improvement Project, Project Number 20-06. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council approve this progress payment number four and final acceptance to Martinez Landscape Company, Inc. for, of Silmar, California, and release retention 35 days after final approval.
I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Ms. Lopez, an update on the American Rescue Plan Act?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam and Council. Uh, we do have our consultant from HDL, Mr. Ken Duran, who will give a short presentation and a summary of the projects that are currently being undertaken by the ARPA funding.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Just wanted to provide you a brief, um, update this evening on the business assistance programs that the city has approved through your ARPA funding. Uh, just as a way of background, the, uh, the city is receiving, uh, this, or received in, in fiscal year 2021, $15.2 million in ARPA funding, and they allocated, uh, $1 million for business assistance programs and authorized $400,000 in program funds. In February, the council approved the outlines of six programs, uh, that, uh, the city has hired HDL companies that I represent to assist them in implementing those programs. At that February meeting, uh, the city council also asked for a follow-up needs assessment, At that February meeting, uh, the city council also asked for a follow-up needs assessment, uh, business needs assessment assistance survey be taken. In April and May of this year, uh, the city and HDL um, contacted uh, or sent out over a thousand flyers and, and posted information about the business assistance survey throughout the community. Unfortunately, there was a fairly low response. There were only about twenty businesses that responded to the survey. Our feeling is that the, the survey that was taken uh, the end of last year, a lot of people were confused that they felt they already had taken the survey, and so they didn't respond to this one. The purpose of the survey, though, was really just to find out how businesses were impacted by the pandemic and to help the city to structure the programs that um, would be addressing those needs. So the, even though it was a low response of this survey, uh, that was validation that the programs that the city has adopted uh, are still relevant. So we want to just give you a brief update this evening on those uh, various programs and where we are with the implementation of those. The first one is a citywide shop local program. The city allocated twenty-five thousand dollars towards that program. And what it is, is a program where residents can purchase e-gift cards for a specified amount, and the city will match um, that amount in the amount of twenty-five dollars and give the residents an additional twenty-five dollar gift card. So if they bought a twenty-five dollar gift card, they would get an additional twenty-five dollars. Uh, local businesses would sign up to be recipients of those cards, and those cards could only be redeemed at the businesses that signed up to be part of the program. The purpose of the program is to get people to shop locally and also to give them some incentive to purchase a card by giving them this additional bonus card. The program uh, then will be marketed to residents and businesses. The current status of the program is that we, um, the, the gift card has been designed. Uh, this is the, the look of the card. Um, it's actually, it's a, it's not a physical card, but it's actually a, a card that they would purchase online, but this is what the card would look like. Um, so we did, we've finished that process. We're currently in the process of marketing the program to local businesses and merchants who would sign up for the program. The goal would, is to try and kick off the program in the beginning of July. Um, try, try and coincide with the centennial celebration. Uh, currently, there is a little bit of a lag in the number of merchants that are participating in the program. So we are starting this week going to do another push to try and get more merchants to sign up for it, do some door-to-door um, campaigning to businesses to get them to participate in the program. There is no cost to the merchants to participate. It's just getting the word out that this program's available to them. So that's the uh, the gift card program. The second is a business rental assistant grant program. Uh, based upon the survey results, identified that there are a number of businesses in the community that are behind in their rent um, due to the pandemic. So the program would allocate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars total to provide up to fifteen thousand dollar uh, grants to businesses to help them pay for their back rent. The program would be geared towards uh, physical brick and mortar businesses that actually have a presence in the city and that they can demonstrate that they are behind in their rent. The um, payments would go directly to the landlord to make sure that it is actually going towards repayment of the rent. Where we are with that program is, again, we've identified um, over a thousand businesses that we think would be eligible for this program. And so we're in the process of putting together the application and the specific guidelines for the program. The HDL companies will be administering that in that we will market the program on behalf of the city. The applications will be taken by our staff. We'll be vetting those applications and, and making sure that those who are applying um, were, are eligible and qualified for the program. The goal is that we can try and get this program launched, hopefully towards the latter part of July of this year. The next program is a, um, there are two that are kind of hand in hand. One is a business assistance grants program, and this would be to provide uh, small grants, five thousand dollars uh, to uh, individual businesses to help them with employee training, rehiring of staff that they may have had to lay off, um, applying for other additional uh, COVID nineteen grants and, and provide them with some financial training for their business. There would be third-party vendors that would be providing these services um, on behalf of the city. The other one that goes hand in hand with that is marketing assistance grants for individual businesses. And this would be individual grants, again, that would go to businesses to help them update their websites or create a website if they don't have one, um, assist them with email accounts and so forth, anything that has to do with marketing. Again, there would be a third-party vendor that we would be utilizing um, to provide those services to the individual businesses. For these two grant programs, we have also reached out to um, the um, couple of nonprofit organizations in the community, the um, El Camino Small Business Development Center and also the South Bay Workforce Investment Board. And we are actually soliciting requests or information from them as to what level of interest they might have in assisting us with implementing these programs. The, the goal again would be that this program would be rolled out sometime, probably the, the latter part of the summer. Um, so the last program is a storefront reopening and board up removal program, and this would be grants for tenants that have boarded up um, their businesses. And this would be grants that would allow them to take down the boards, replace glass or other storefront materials that may have been damaged, remove graffiti, um, replace signage. Because of the, the significant amount of the work that might be required, we feel that the, the amount of the grant should be in the neighborhood of ten thousand dollars per business. There's a hundred thousand dollars available in this program, so that means that there's only ten businesses that might be eligible. We're looking at this as a pilot program. We're not sure how much interest there is. So we will be working with the city staff to identify either specific businesses or specific shopping centers that might be the best candidates for this pilot program. That program will probably start sometime a little bit later than the summer because we want to focus our attention on the other programs that I've identified. So that's kind of a brief update of where we are with the programs. The one that we're really excited about, you know, that we're, you know, on the verge of launching right now is the gift card program and working with the city staff to really take advantage of the activities that you'll have for your centennial celebration to really kick off this program in the community. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Um, for the, uh, through the chair? For the shop local program, how many businesses do you have for that?
Uh, we sent out notices to over seven hundred businesses to participate. Unfortunately, we only have a handful, uh, less, less than half a dozen right now signed up. So that's why we're really gonna uh, take another push right now to do some door-to-door contacting of the businesses. Because you really want to have enough businesses signed up for the program to make it attractive for residents to want to purchase a gift card. So we may not be able to actually start selling the gift cards within the next few weeks, but we can at least start to let the community know that this program is coming.
I was going to say, this seems, these seem like, these seem like really great programs. Why do you, why do you think we're not having a better response?
It's, the company that we're using is called Yifty. They have this gift card program throughout the, the country and a lot in California. And they say that it, this is the hardest part to get a program going is because business, small businesses are so busy. You send them a notice and you really need to keep following up with them. And then what we found is that the businesses that we do have, it's once one business in the center signs up, they start talking to their neighbors, say, hey, did you sign up for this program? And so that's why we think when we, when we kind of really do this face-to-face contact with the businesses and explain that there's no cost to you, all it's gonna do is drive business to you, that that'll really kind of put us over the top. And then once the businesses start to talk amongst themselves, it'll be kind of um, you know, self-perpetuating. And it's also an ongoing program. Businesses can um, add to the program anytime throughout the process. It's not a, a window right now where you're either in or you're out. So I think once businesses, again, start to talk to their neighboring businesses, once cards are being used, then we'll start to attract some more businesses.
And then I'm seeing the same thing with the other programs, the business rental assistance, the business assistance grants, the marketing assistance grants. It doesn't seem like you're getting a big response.
Well, we haven't started to market those programs yet. So the, the only one that we started to market to the, the community is the gift card program. We've, for the rental assistance program, we've identified about a thousand businesses that we will start to market the program to once we're ready to start accepting applications.
So what is the timetable for that? When are you going to start accepting uh, applications?
For the rental assistance program, our target would be the, the latter part of July.
And the others?
Uh, the, for the business assistance and the other marketing assistance, we're looking at probably the latter part of the summer for that program. And then the board up program, probably the beginning of the fall.
Okay, so my concern is that um, I know the businesses need assistance. And it seems like it's very slow getting out, getting it out to them. So I'm really concerned about that. You're saying the latter part of July for the business, business rental assistance and, and the, and the grants, latter part of the summer. I, I'm, I'm really not understanding why is this taking so long? I guess that I just need to say it like that.
Yeah, it's, it's a, you know, we're building these programs from scratch. We have experience with other communities that were doing these programs. But one of the things is identifying the businesses. It's taken quite a bit of time to identify the businesses that might be eligible. So um, now that we have that core information, we can start to move faster in rolling out these programs.
All right, thank you.
Through the chair. Go ahead, sir. A couple of things. Uh, sir, what was your name again?
Uh, Ken Duran.
Duran?
Yes.
Nice to meet you. Um, can we, and it's also, I guess, asking the city manager, you know, a- as you go out and do all this community outreach and build these relationships with these businesses, I would like to make sure that we kind of maintain these relationships with our local businesses even after these programs have ended. Uh, I think that's something that would be a great asset in the future as we have other things that we might want to do to support the business community. And I just want to uh, also ask that we kind of review the progress um, frequently to just make sure that it's, the money is getting out there. Uh, we don't want to wait too long to find out that not that many businesses have taken advantage of it for one reason or another and just be open to uh, amending the, the guidelines um, if necessary to make sure that, you know, we can get this money out.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Duran. Um, actually, you know, it is very good that actually uh, we are trying to invest in our community to make sure that all the help that we got from the federal government is going back also to the community. So it is very good to have all these program in place. One of the things that I, I think that the business are reluctant to respond is the fact that, you know, they had bad experience with the state and the federal government. They give those loans. Uh, and with the process was serious, you know, a lot of paperwork, a lot of asking is asking, asking, asking. So can we make our application of all these programs much easy? So business can just feel much more attractive to resply instead of being asking so much different forms, you know, because uh, I, I tell you, uh, myself as a, as a nonprofit small business, I tried to apply for the state, those grants. I got frustrated. I said, forget about it, right? So that's exactly what happened to me. So I didn't get no money for, so, but this is kind of thing that maybe we need to uh, go out there and say, look, this is, is an easy process. We'll guide you how to do it. Um, and even, I don't know if maybe we should do some town hall meetings with the business um, in the community and say, and, and tell them, you know, we have these programs, the money is there, we're willing to give it to you, but you know, it's just one-page application and we will approve it.
And from our experience, so the, the rental assistance program in particular is one that we've rolled out into a number of communities. And we've, with our experience, we've been able to simplify that process and actually compress the timetable of it because people don't want a sixty-day process when they submit an application. So we, uh, several months ago, we rolled out this program in the city of San Leandro, and within a couple of weeks, we were at capacity as far as the number of applications. Were able to turn around those applications and actually start a warning money within thirty days of the close of the application process. So I think our company is, has gained some experience that we can, we know that that is a, a real drawback from people because, you know, I know a lot of people, businesses that we talked to gave up through the, the federal and the state process because it was, it was, I need another document, I need another document. So we want to make sure that in the beginning, they know exactly what they need to submit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I, I tend to agree with the comments that were made earlier. The paperwork, it just seems almost, it's a little big hurdles to, you know, to cross. And with the rental assistance program, it's like documents not only that the renter has to do, had to get, but it's also getting information from the landlords and the landlords, there's like sometimes, sometimes there's some hostility between both parts. There's, they don't always get along, so people delay, et cetera. So if, so if the businesses are the ones that are gonna apply, then it might be easier. But when you have multiple parties that have to provide information and paperwork for the process, then it could be uh, full of hurdles. So thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good comments from all my council member colleagues. So, um, I make a motion to accept the uh, the update?
Second.
I, I need to read it first.
You haven't read it?
No.
I thought you did. Okay.
Uh, item twelve, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Business Assistance Program Update. Recommendation, recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council receive, approve and file the American Rescue Plan Act, Business Assistance Program Update.
I make the motion again?
Second.
Uh, please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Uh, Mayor Protem, th- this is your second or third meeting outside? Uh, out, out here within the public?
Probably like third?
Third, I know.
Third, maybe fourth tops?
Because I'm so used to saying, uh, please, I'll do the roll call vote.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Kind of reminded me that's recent and that, you know, you're, this is your like third or fourth meeting that you've been out here, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's much different, right?
Much different.
Next, we have the city manager's consent calendar. Mr. Clerk, please proceed with items thirteen through fifteen.
Item thirteen, consultant contract between the City of Hawthorne and Newmark of Southern California, Inc. Newmark Knight Frank Kara Christopher Beck for the Purpose of Real Estate Investment Guidance. Item fourteen, fiscal year twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three blanket purchase orders. Item fifteen, receive and file the single audit report for fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one. And yeah, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my city manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items thirteen to fifteen?
I'd like to pull number thirteen.
Okay. I make a motion on all the other items?
Second.
Uh, second goes to Councilwoman Valentine. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Discussion on thirteen, Councilwoman?
Yeah, thirteen, uh, just a, um, okay, just uh, basically a typo, I think. It's um, if you look at uh, the compensation, um, section five A, um, it says this amount shall be, it should be not to exceed the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars through June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, and it should be twenty twenty-three for the entire contract period.
That's important.
That's kind of important.
That's pretty important. That's a great catch.
Page. Agreement between the City of Hawthorne and Newmark of Southern California. The first page.
Is the first page of the agreement.
Section five compensation.
Second.
Five A, last sentence.
It's not written correctly. It's a mistake.
It'd be twenty twenty-three.
Exactly.
Exactly.
That.
Because today's twenty-eight.
What's going on here? Are we, is that, do we catch something?
Yeah, so we corrected it, so you, you all corrected it, so you can vote to approve based on the correction.
Okay, so that's good, actually, good.
Great catch.
Was that it?
That's it.
Okay, so then, uh, we'd like to make the motion?
Second.
Oh, we'd like to make the motion?
I move that the agreement between the City of Hawthorne and Newmark of Southern California, Newmark Knight Frank for Real Estate and Development Consulting Services be approved.
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Um, item thirteen, that's a great asset that we have, absolutely great asset, so let's continue that relationship. Okay. We have the discussion action items today, and we already brought up item sixteen, which was the appointment of Dr. Stephen Nellman to the Veterans Affairs Commission. We congratulate him once more. Uh, but now we have a, a series of, of action discussion items. And so as, as mentioned earlier, we just want to make sure we consolidate these and kind of limit them, but let's go ahead and go through these.
Okay. Number seventeen and number eighteen are pretty similar. These are, these two bills all eliminate revenue streams to the cities. And I recommend, um, I'm recommending opposition to those and the League of California recommended opposition. It's um, seventeen oh-two and nineteen fifty-one, so.
Synopsis on each, please?
The bill, the, the existing sales and tax use laws impose taxes on retailers measured by the gross receipts from the sale of tangible personal property sold at retail in this state or on the storage use or the consumption in this state of tangible personal property purchased from a retailer for storage use or other consumption in this state. This bill seventeen oh-two would exempt from those taxes the gross receipts from the sale of and storage of COVID nineteen prevention and response goods. So by exempting those from state taxes, it also exempts the cities from, the cities would also not receive gross receipts from those sales, which, because it's, it's part of the revenue stream. So. So I'm, so the League of California cities said that for these bills that eliminate the revenue streams to the cities, we should oppose them, and I'm recommending opposing seventeen oh-two. Do you want to go through the one by one? Seventeen oh-two and nineteen fifty-one are very similar.
Can you just read the second one, just so we could just have it?
Nineteen fifty-one is number eighteen, and that one exempts exempts qualified tangible personal property purchased by a qualified person for purchases not exceeding two hundred million dollars for use primarily in manufacturing, processing, refining, fabricating, or recycling of tangible personal property. Qualified tangible personal property purchased for use by a qualified person to be used primarily in research and development as provided. Qualified tangible personal property purchased for use by a qualified person to be used primarily to maintain, repair, measure, or test any qualified tangible personal property. And qualified tangible personal property purchased by a contractor purchasing that property for use in the performance of a construction contract. So they're trying to attract these businesses, and so they're giving them a, a sales tax exemption. But it also eliminates the sales tax exemption to the cities.
So if I may add to that, it's basically maybe nineteen fifty-one is a sort of an amendment to the tax exemption. The laws that we had since twenty fourteen, and it would expire in twenty thirty, was that there would be a partial exemption for some of these manufacturing, purchase of manufacturing, things of the nature for purpose of research and development, and for contractors, and for electrical power. And by this, this, this bill would basically make it a full exemption. And in addition to that, by a revenues and taxation code, the state would not reimburse the local agencies for the exempted sales tax because local agencies would lose out on the sales tax of revenues for agencies. And this, this amendment or this bill would make it so that the state would not have to reimburse the cities for loss of sales revenue. It's also the AB seventeen oh-two is basically for prevention and responsive goods. And, and the basis for the opposition from legal cities is, is of course the reduction of the sales revenue for local agencies, and also because there is a hundred billion dollar surplus of the state budget. So I think the, the league is questioning, why isn't it being used? Why isn't that surplus being applied to assist, for instance, under AB seventeen oh-two for COVID goods? You know, instead of taking away from local agencies, the league is questioning, why doesn't the state just pay for it out of their surplus? Same with AB nineteen fifty-one, why is the state going into the coffers of the local agencies when they have a hundred billion dollar surplus? I think that was the opposite basis for the opposition by the league.
I'll make a motion for both seventeen and eighteen.
We motion to oppose, right?
Motion to oppose, absolutely.
Second.
Please vote.
Wait for just a moment. Okay, go ahead.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
And the reason you bring these up is because of the urgency and the timely, the time aspect? Or, or just because they, they had a series of them that they would like for us to?
No, their bills, well.
Are they like around, around the corner?
The bills, my understanding is this is the end of the state, this is the end of the session.
Got it, got it, got it.
So we have to, you know, they're going to decide them one way or the other. And I think you said, Mr. City Attorney, that they're still pending, which means.
With respect to AB seventeen oh-two, it's still in the Revenues and Taxation Committee in the Assembly, so it hasn't gone to the Senate yet. In terms of AB nineteen fifty-one, in May twenty-fifth, it was passed in the Assembly, and it's in the Senate, and it's in a Governance and Finance Committee of the Senate right now.
Now, okay, so AB twenty-six twenty-two, thank you. AB twenty-six twenty-two, and that is number nineteen. That is another sales tax exemption from state sales, but this one is being supported by the league because this one is an exemption from taxes involved in specified zero emission technology transit buses sold to specified public agencies that are eligible for specified incentives from the state Air Resources Board. And this bill would extend the exemption, the exemption for specified zero emission technology transit buses until January first, twenty twenty-six. The league is supporting, supporting this one because public agencies in alignment with the California Air Resource Board's innovative clean transit regulation must completely transition their bus fleets by twenty forty, but face significant upfront costs. And AB twenty-six twenty-two supports public transit agencies transitioning their fleets from conventional fuels towards zero emission technologies and improved local air quality. So the league supports this one.
And AB twenty-six twenty-two had passed the Senate in May twenty-sixth, and it's in Senate Governance and Finance Committee right now.
So this is just giving them more time to transition? Is that what this is?
Well, so because these bills are all still pending, we still have an opportunity to express our support or opposition.
No, but the bill is, is pushing the exemption back from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six. So essentially giving them more, more time to transition.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve, move to support. AB twenty-six twenty-two.
Second. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Item twenty has been tabled to the meeting of July twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Item twenty-one, Councilmember Montero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, this item, you know, was the great idea of Ms. Councilwoman English. Because as you know, Monica De Creasy, she worked for the city clerk as a deputy clerk for twenty, twenty-five years plus. So, and, and we know unfortunately, you know, she lost her battle with cancer. And we did have a great service and loving memory of Monica on Saturday, June eighteen. Now, Ms. English suggests that, and I support, that we create a plaque in her memory, so actually two plaques. One can goes right there where it says press, where Monica used to sit for twenty-five years plus, to put over there, over there in memory of, of her, and also one in the city clerk's office because you know how Monica was a very, she was an angel, you know, so she advised us in everything, even how to be a good councilman and how to be a good mayor. So giving us a sheet what to do and what not to do. So she was a great asset for the city and a great friend and a great love of all of us. So I'm asking for concurrence for you, us to do those two plaques and to put one right here next to the press and the other one in the city clerk's office.
I concur.
Concur.
Make a motion?
Okay, I make a motion.
Second. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Valentine, Senate Bill fourteen forty-nine?
Okay, fourteen forty-nine is recommending support on this one. This bill establishes the unincorporated area annexation incentive program, authorizing grants to cities in the form of matching grants for annexation of and infrastructure projects in unincorporated areas. This is to provide incentives to cities to annex and serve unincorporated areas. And we have some unincorporated areas in our vicinity. And I think if this comes to fruition and it passes and there's real money available, we might be able to consider annexing some of our neighbors, some of our neighbor, neighboring, unincorporated areas.
Grab that doughnut in the middle of Hawthorne?
Exactly.
So anyway, I think, but, but the league is recommending support of this because it does, it does. There was harm caused by SB eighty-nine years ago that, that swept over two hundred million dollars annually in vehicle license fees from cities that served as the fiscal foundation for new annexations. And after SB eighty-nine, cities no longer have sufficient incentive to annex and serve inhabited, unincorporated areas. So it could be, this could be a big benefit to the cities if they want to do this.
Do we have a motion?
I move to support SB fourteen forty-nine.
Okay. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Okay, let's take another look at the next item.
The last one is AB twenty ninety-seven, and that's the last one I have. That one is another attempt by the state to rescind local control from the cities. It would prohibit a city in a county with a population of six hundred thousand or more from imposing or enforcing minimum parking requirements on a developer of residential or commercial property if it is located within a half mile of public transit. And it doesn't specify that the public transit has to be trains. If the city has a population of seventy-five thousand or more, it would prohibit imposing or enforcing minimum parking on developers if the project is within a, a quarter mile of public transit. So I'm, again, this is I'm sorry.
Twenty ninety-seven?
Yeah, twenty ninety-seven. I move to, to oppose twenty ninety-seven.
Yeah, a second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Okay. Item twenty-four has been tabled to the meeting of July twelfth, twenty twenty-two. And, okay, so now we have the elected officials' reports, there are no go-bags. Make sure you spend the, the time, you need to, to write down your bullet points. Okay? Go ahead, Mr. City Treasurer, and then Mr. City Clerk.
All right, good evening, good meeting. I'm really looking forward to the hundred year celebration coming up, that'll be great. I actually had my uncle visiting from out of, out of state, and he really wanted to see the, the Beach Boy monument. So I actually went there this past week, and he was worried that it might be so crowded that we wouldn't have time for a picture. But I told him, don't worry. But it was, it was pretty cool, and he was really excited. He even put on a, like a Beach Boy shirt and all that, so. It was really cool just to drive around there and, and see the monument down in Doty. And other than that, you know, and then for financial stuff, you know, the city still has a good amount of cash and it's, you know, interest rates are rising. Obviously, it's, that has kind of bad consequences too, but it does help with earning some more interest than the meager amount that was, you know, prior. But now that they're raising rates and inflation, I think people have heard that word before. You know, the rates are going up for fixed assets, so that kind of good, but I'm sure that's overall bad for other reasons. And thank you.
You stayed under your five minutes. Good job. I will time myself as well. This will be quick. So first of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I want to thank all the residents for being here tonight. I know it's not easy sometimes getting out during this time, especially during dinnertime. So first of all, we just want to share with you, we'll be in front of City Hall this Saturday, July second, at ten AM, providing produce and registering voters. We provide a minimum of two large bags of produce to each resident that comes by, so please come on by. We basically were there until supplies last, usually that's about eleven-thirty. And our average, on average, we give out produce to about four, or actually, our numbers have gone up, it's about five hundred families, so it's quite a bit of produce. In addition, I want to thank Councilmember Montero, because of him, we'll be, also be handing out COVID-nineteen home test kits, kits to the families. I also want to share that we've updated our city clerk's website with information regarding the November election. If you're thinking about running or for, or for voting information, please visit the city clerk's website and click on the link labeled "election information and voting." And during our next meeting, I'll be out of the country with my wife and two boys. So I wish everyone, all of you have a nice and productive meeting on July twelfth. And that's all on my, that's all for me. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, thank you for all the community that came up and to speak about issues. It's good to hear from people, and that's the way we take action. Thank you to the staff for all the work you guys do out there, from, from our HPD, the Hawthorne Police. Very busy, based on that report that the chief sent us, so continue to do good work over there. Again, I want to say thank you to the Holly Park Neighborhood Association, the Parkside Village, and those all got involved to bring the Juneteenth celebration at the park, so it was a great event, so thank you again for that. Also, I want to thank the, our city manager and the Community Service Department, Parks and Recs, because we did two groundbreaking for the renovation of the Holly Glen Park and also the Jim Thorpe Park. So those parks going to be renovated, and we will have a re-incorporate sometime in October. I want to say, you know, it's going to be, again, you know, the, the public participate on the strategic planning that the city conducted last week. So thank you for those residents who came up and expressed their views, you know, to give us some ideas what this city should drive through in the future. I want to say to happy Fourth of July, it's coming up on next Monday. I want to give a directive because, you know, how we've been trying to help business, you know, even through these hyper funds, money from, from the federal government, there is a, a sector of the business that we have not paid attention to. Is those business that's trying to come to the city, you know, like developers of hotels, for example, right? Because we have great news coming out of the SoFi Stadium that the FIFA World Cup twenty twenty-six is going to be in, the finals is going to be in Inglewood. So, and as you know, World Cup brings hundreds and thousands of people from all over the world to see the World Cup, it's, it's the number one sport in the world. So we're going to have a lot of people coming from Europe, from Africa, from Asia, so we need more hotels. So what I'm asking is, is to, for us to maybe working with these developers that have project in line, that during COVID, they didn't able to build them, special hotels, that we probably would like them to resubmit their plans because, you know, we know some of them, because of state and of our own orders, we have changed some building codes. So for them to update their plans and for us maybe to go through the expedite, fast track, so these hotels could be built ASAP, so we can put ourselves in line to take advantage of all the money that's going to come to not just Inglewood, but right here in Hawthorne, because economic development is important. So if we're going to have events in Inglewood, because remember, Inglewood does not has a metro station. Everybody have to come to Hawthorne to go to Inglewood on metro, on a metro link. We got two stations, right, right there on Aviation and one right here on Imperial. So we want to catch these people to shop and dine in Hawthorne and sleep in Hawthorne, right? And then they can go to the game. So we need to build more hotels, especially, you know, on Al Segundo, Imperial, Highway. So I wanted to give a directive to work with these developers to try to bring this project to life ASAP, because we need to put ourselves in line. So thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Valentine?
Thank you. So I want to thank the community for coming out tonight and expressing your, your concerns. Glad to see that the Hawthorne Library is still, is, is going to be open. But I also want to mention that the library at one hundred and twentieth and Van Ness, or the, the former library, is still vacant, is still being used by the county for storage. And I really think that we've had, we've had several meetings with the, with the county about that. And as I said when Ms. Cohen's was, was, was at the podium, I really think that the, it, it, it has to be the community that has to make it, make their voices heard, that they actually want this to happen. Because we have certainly from the city, we have certainly made our voices heard. But they need to hear from the community that this is. they need to hear from the community, that this is something that you want. And if, and if you make it clear, I think it, there will be a response. But without community support and community pushback, nothing's going to happen. So that's just a word to the wise. Thank you to the community for coming out to the SWAT planning. It was a great event. It was really very uplifting to me to listen to the different comments from the people in the community as, as to what they wanted to see in Hawthorne and the different creative ideas that they had. So there will be, there will be a report coming from that SWAT exercise, and there will be another meeting, another opportunity for you to come out. So I encourage more people to do that. I want to thank the Police Department for their excellent May monthly newsletter. As Councilmember Montero said, it was excellent, it was really excellent. Detailed reporting from each bureau. Congratulations also on the use of, the skillful use of the drone in locating and monitoring suspects. I was very impressed with that. So that, that report is very helpful to us. So thank you for that. I've been told that pickleball is going to come to Ramona Park on this, beginning this coming Saturday, and for the, for the follow, for the entire month of July. I'm very much interested, and I want you to make, I, I'd like to encourage as many people to come out on Saturday as possible for pickleball, something, something new and interesting in the community. And with that, that's all I have. Have a good evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I want to first thank the community for coming out, participating at the council meeting. Love that, see your faces. Please, Tina, encourage your, your neighbors to come out as well and make your voices heard. Definitely a super valuable contribution, right, to, to not just the council meeting, but making sure that the city is successful, having your voices here to kind of, to, you know, guide us in the decisions that we make. Want to thank staff for all your hard work. Everybody from the graffiti removal unit to the city manager's office, to finance, the finance department, just everybody, you guys are doing a great job, really appreciate your hard work. Want to thank everybody for the, all the great birthday wishes that I received over the last week. I appreciate it, and appreciate all the gifts, you know, no matter, you know, from the balloon that I got today. To, you know, just, just a simple happy birthday, definitely appreciate it. Let's see. Happy 4th of July coming up. Hope everybody has a, a safe 4th of July. I'm looking forward to some of the complaints that are going to come after 4th of July about all the noise and, and all that good stuff. So hopefully we can kind of figure out something in that respect. Patrice Springer talked about elder abuse, super important subject, I'm glad she was able to share that. I, one of our, my council colleagues brought up the fact that, that oftentimes elders are targeted through calls of different types and different type of scams. I live with my uncle, my uncle, his birthday is actually the day before mine, he just turned 76. And I remember at one point, he was getting calls every day, being told that he won something, some type of sweepstakes, or some type of lottery, or some type of something, and that he needed to give some money in order to release that, those winnings. I think one time he even got a check in the mail, looked really real, too. And of course, I advised him to talk to the bank, and the bank said, you know, just informed that it wasn't legitimate, and whatever that scam was. So, you know, so that's really real, and it's really upsetting, it's really sad. So let's definitely keep our eyes out for our family members and our neighbors, to make sure that they're safe, and we see something that doesn't make any sense, you know, let's definitely speak out about that. We have a commemorative dinner for our 100-year anniversary Friday, July 8th. I was told I have a table I get to fill up, and I don't have, I don't have any friends to hang out with me. So I was hoping that I can invite some staff to, to join me at my, at the table, so the city manager, if you can maybe find some staff members that wouldn't mind having dinner with me. Kyle, looks like she, she raised her hand. I would love to have Kyle join me. And if there's anybody else that, Ruby Cohen?
Yeah, I'm sure you can get that to sit there.
I don't think I'm allowed to, but. If Ruby's interested, Bill, I don't know, Bill, you have your own table, don't you, right? Haggardies, are you guys, do you guys have a table? If you guys need a table, you guys, please hang out with me. So help me kind of pull together some friends to, to hang out with me on the 8th, that'd be great.
Your uncle.
Yeah, if I can get him out the house, that would be awesome. But he's definitely on the list of invitees. November election's coming up, the city clerk I had mentioned. I'm excited about it. I love this part of our great country, which is, you know, elections and democracy and voting and all that stuff. I'm excited about it, just as just a citizen of Hawthorne to see how things shake out. I hope that this year we attract a lot of great quality candidates. I think the future of our city is impacted by the quality of the candidates that run for office. And so the people that, that's elected to represent to the community make some important decisions that really impact the economic development, impact employment, impact taxes, impact, you know, business growth, development, so many important things. So I, I encourage anybody who's on the fence about running to consider running. If you have any questions about these different positions, you can ask me. I've held, you know, city treasurer position at one point, and, you know, now the city, now the city council position, so I love to offer any kind of information or advice. And I definitely want to encourage the community to make a, wow, I've talked a lot today, to make a very informed decision, right? Get to know your candidates, and please vote. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. I know somebody you could invite to fill up your table. Just kidding, I had to throw that in, I was just holding it. No, but, look, there's a lot of great events coming up for the centennial, so thank you. I just want to kind of summarize them, because I think this will be our last meeting before the centennial. I don't think anybody got to do that, so I'll just go ahead and do that. And the first event is on Friday, July 8th. It's the commemorative dinner from 5:00 to 8:00 o'clock. It's on a Friday, so some of you might have to get out of work, so you can come at 5:00 to socialize with your neighbors. And individuals, $30, nonprofits, $250 per table, businesses, $500 per table. Formal attire, this is a big deal, 100, I don't think, I don't know if I'll be around for the 200-year anniversary, so this is your chance to be able to celebrate and join your neighbors in celebrating Hawthorne's history. The next day, kind of a throwback to the, of yesteryears, I was talking to my council colleagues, that we used to have the parade that went along Hawthorne Boulevard, and you used to turn right on, on El Segundo Boulevard and go towards the parking lot at the Betty Ainsworth Center, and we would have the Kiwanis Fair there. But now, we're going to go straight down Hawthorne Boulevard and come up here to the civic center, our civic center here, and we're going to have a big block party here for all the residents. And it's going to be fun, it's going to be start at 10, so the parade will start at 10. Everybody's going to be hearing the music, everybody's going to be seeing the movement, and everybody can join us on Hawthorne Boulevard, and just, just come here, right to the city hall area for 4 o'clock. It's a free event, it's going to be fun. The, the planning committee has done a lot of good things, and they're going to surprise us with a lot of little treats there. The next event is the Day at the Hawthorne Museum with the Hawthorne Historical Society. We have some of the representatives that were able to come today representing, and it's going to be a tour of the museum, car display, an art show, and a continental breakfast, and then you can hang out for the barbecue lunch. They're going to be selling tickets. How much are the tickets going to be, sir? You have an idea? Oh, okay, you guys are, I thought you guys were in the Historical Society. Do you, are you aware? It'll be a modest amount that everybody can participate. It'll be a modest amount. Okay, so, so please come and join us. Probably five, 10 bucks, something very modest and affordable, and you'll be able to participate. So that's going to be a great thing. July 11th, which is Monday, at 6 o'clock, I'll be having the State of the City address, and that'll be held here at the Hawthorne Memorial Center, so everybody can come and join us. It's a free event, different than the previous years where the Hawthorne, where Pat Donaldson was hosting that event, and I guess they were charging for, for the residents. But my thing is, this needs to be free, so that all the residents of Hawthorne are able to have access to hearing what the good news is in the city of Hawthorne. Great things that we've done as a city council, as a city hall team, as our police department, and just hear the great news of things that we've done. Been a lot of hard work, so that's kind of a summary of the things that we've done. So free, starting at 6, 6 to 7, you guys get to mingle, and then at 7, we start the address. Okay, get straight to it, okay? Outside, under a tent, with TVs, so you can see what the presentation is as I speak. So thank you, guys. Then the time capsule opening ceremony, in 1985, I believe it was, it was in, what year? Did they lock it up?
Eighty-four.
In 1984, the city council and city leaders and members of the community collected memorabilia, things that they wanted for us to see on that day, and it's specific to that day, I believe, that we were supposed to open it up. So we're going to see what kind of treats they left for us, what kind of interesting things we're going to find in there. So please join us at 10 o'clock on July 12th, 2022. It's worth taking the day off and coming and hanging out with us that day, so it's going to be lots of good information. It's not good information, it's going to be a big treat, a lot of things that we're going to be able to probably find there, hopefully. And what if we open it up, it's like one of those TV programs where they have like a big momentous climax, and all of a sudden it's empty? That would be a big joke, or the little map that starts pointing us to here, and then we got to go here, and then we got to go there, and then, you know, et cetera. And under the old police station, oh my God, we don't have a police station anymore, so it'd be crazy. So I appreciate that. Mr. City Attorney? This is a request for me. I would like for you to take a look at the, report to us with the Pat Donaldson's Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce nonprofit statuses, please. And I would like to, for you to confirm what her nonprofit status is for Hope is Helping. My understanding is that it's a 501(c)(3). I'd also like for you to confirm if both the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce have business licenses here, and the Hope is Helping, if they have a business license here as well. Since the Hope is Helping is a 501(c)(3) under the IRS code that I, that's anybody can find, the Internal Revenue Code All Section, 501(c)(3) organizations are absolutely prohibited from directly or indirectly participating in or intervening in any political campaign on behalf of or in opposition to any candidate for elective public office. And unfortunately, I've, we've seen time and time again that she's been advocating, and at least one of her nonprofits, it's a 501(c)(3). So if you can confirm this, and I think it's, at this point, it'd be, if that is true, if it's confirmed, we could probably report it to the IRS, okay?
I'll file a report.
Okay. Please file a report, don't take action on that until we review that as a council.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, but onto better news, it's going to be a good centennial, there's a lot of great things. We have a lot of members of our society, Historical Society and the community that are here, looking forward to all the great hoopla that's going to happen there. And I guess that's it for today. A great meeting, so I'll declare this meeting over, concluded at 8:04 p.m.
Do we have a closed session?
No, we don't have a closed session. There is no closed session on tonight's agenda.
That's what it says.
Yeah. So thank you. Meeting's adjourned at 8:04.